I'm Walter Ramsey, I'm town planner for Montague. And I wanted to thank you all for coming, save your time out of your busy schedule. It means a lot for the community to show up for a meeting like this. Because the more you put into it, the more you can get out of the book process. So, we're calling this plan "Millers on the Move", and that's to capture the sense of positive momentum that's happening in Millers Falls. There's a good sense of things happening in town right now. There's some long vacant properties that are being fixed up. There are new businesses that have opened up or expanded in town. The Millers Falls Community Improvement Association has been reconstituted, and there's some interesting things going on across the river in Millers Falls. Some opportunities with some mill properties that they're trying to redevelop, and buildings that they're constructing on the other side of the river, their traditional other side of Millers Falls. And so, it felt like the time is ripe to do a strategic plan centered around the village of Millers Falls. So, to that end, the town of Montague, myself working with Suzanne Lamato, the director of River Culture, who are part of a team, we wrote to the state to ask for help to develop a community-driven plan. So here we are today kicking that process off. So a strategic plan is really an ability for the community, the villagers such as yourself, to articulate your goals and priorities, and to tell your story to the outside world. And this is really about figuring out what story do we want to tell people. So the type of users of a plan are more than you'd think. It's not just me sitting in my planning office using a plan. It's, yes, local government uses the plan to help decide how to use resources, how to decide which projects to advance is a priority, and also in development decisions. If there's a proposal for a development plan like this, really helps inform your local decision makers. But also the private sector uses plans. Potential businesses that are looking to locate Millers Falls, and also the banks that underwrite them. And this has been a challenge for some of the new businesses that are located in Millers, is getting big financing. And if you have a good cohesive community plan, it helps let the money flow into the community. And potential residents use the plan to decide whether they want to move here, and yes, to be in your village or not. And also, community leaders such as yourselves. Especially, it's really a tool for you to use to go to speak with businesses, government, to help get what's best for your community. To the end of local leaders, we pulled together a team of what we're calling a core team of people to help guide the process along. That got us started from day one there, and helped kind of designing the planning process. And some of the members are here today, most of them are. And from that group, we have Kate Martinow, and she's a local resident, author, and member of the Cultural Council. We've got Richard Widmer, another resident, a filmmaker, owner of the former St. John's Church, an important redevelopment site in town. Bob O'Beir, and he is a Montague resident, owns O'Beir Construction, manages over 12 units and five commercial spaces in Millers, and a member of the planning board. And we've also been consulting closely with Bobby Soika, a lifelong resident who wasn't able to make it today, but has been very closely involved. And also, we've been coordinating closely with the Millers Falls Community Improvement Association. Suzanne's been through a couple of their meetings now, keeping her apprised of kind of this planning process. As far as rounding out the technical expertise of the team, there's myself, a town planner. I've been with town for nine years. And I've done a similar plan in Turner's Falls in 2013. We did the downtown living building plan. And that has resulted in a lot of new businesses, and helped fund a lot of interesting projects there. So we have a success with doing community-driven, neighborhood-specific plans and getting them implemented. Suzanne Lamato is the cultural coordinator, and she's really taking the lead in managing this project. And she's been coordinator for, what, three or four years now?
Six.
Six.
High five.
And she has a real connection to the creative community, and she's a great asset, being able to get this thing implemented, and has helped organize the event that we have here today. And last but not least, there's Peg Behringer. And she is our consultant that is going to facilitate the meeting today and help us write the plan. And she is being supported by the Mass Department of Housing and Economic Development, and is funding her assistance to help us write this plan. She's done similar plans for communities up and down the east coast. Is a lecturer at Tufts University and is a consultant firm. And we've worked with Peg for several different projects in Turner's Falls with great success. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Peg to start the process.
Well, thank you for coming and having the opportunity. It's really nice to be here, and I'm glad to make it before the heat that's coming upon us, right? You talked about, is your ice cream social, is that this weekend?
Yeah.
Just in time, right? Good time. I wanted to start to kind of give you a little bit of an overview of the project and what we're doing. This is our study area. And so when we talk about Millers Falls Village Center, I'm not sure if everybody thinks of the boundaries exactly the same way. We want to focus on that little yellow dashed area. So really the core where there are businesses and the commercial buildings in town. We also want to look at how that part of town connects and is impacted by other parts of town, like the river and the park. So, you know, we're kind of focusing mostly on that area, but we want to see how that impacts other areas. And we're also including in our study Smokehouse Restaurant. Because even though it's a little farther outside the center, it's really synergistically, you know, part of the Village Center, and it does well, and it's starting to really have a connection with the brewery. So we want to include that as well. And this is just our process. We met with the working group that Walter talked about back in May, and we started discussing some of this stuff. And then in June, we've been doing an initial review of the existing conditions, and we also did a community survey. How many here did we fill out the community survey? Oh, woo, thank you. Okay, good. So, we got almost 70 responses, so we thought that was a pretty good response. And we're going to talk about the results of that survey a little bit later on. Then tonight is our community meeting number one. And so I'm going to do a little bit of presentation, but then we want to hear, you know, do a lot of hearing from you. And then there's a little bit of community homework between now and our next meeting during August, researching and thinking about some potential projects and programs. Then we plan to have another meeting in September. So this is not your last time to be able to give input. You know, we've got another one coming up. So we're going to get, you know, kind of far down the road today, but then we're going to narrow things and then come back again in September. And then in October, the working group will work together to sort of summarize the goals and projects. So I just want to kind of let you know where we are. And you know, I just wondered, could we really quickly, if nobody tells their life story, this will go fast, can we just have you introduce yourselves? And we'll just kind of start at the beginning. And just, you could just say your name and one thing you'd like about the Village Center. So, I'm Peg Behringer, and this is probably a personal preference, but I like the diagonal part. So I'm going to start with you.
Hi, I'm George. And I like the size.
Okay.
I like the size of the town.
Okay, great.
I'm Sandy, and I like the element brewery company.
Brewery, okay.
I'm Peggy, and I like the library.
Library, okay.
I'm Jen, and I like the filming and all.
All right, well, it's not that gay, but you have, you know. But that's good, okay.
I'm Ken, I like just being walking around the house.
Okay. How about we move to you, do with mine.
I'm Kara, and I love the library.
Okay. Hey.
I'm Kate, and I like that we can now walk to three different eating and drinking establishments.
Yeah, okay.
I'm Nancy, and I live the library.
Okay.
I'm Gretchen, I also like the walkability. I mean, it's small, but it's nice that you can get around.
Okay. Hi.
Hi. I'm Marcia, and I like the library, and I like having lived here for 73 years.
Okay, all right. How about we move to you, sir?
Yeah, I'm David. I live on the other side of the river, but I think I still qualify. And I like the downtown because of a lot of history that's here.
Okay. History.
My name's Linda, and first I like the library. I am a little biased because I'm the library director.
All right.
I'm Peggy, from the other side, and I love the church. I've belonged to it for 35 years.
Okay.
I'm Memeal, I love the church and the library.
Okay, all right. That big library, continue there.
I'm Michael, I love the timing. We own a house across the street, and I love the timing that we have. We've been here at rebuilding, and things, just before we bought the house, it started to develop. So it was fascinating that we lucked out.
Okay, all right.
I'm Tammy, and I like the walkability and the trees.
The trees, okay. Sir.
I'm Mike, and I like a number of things, but I'll say the whistle stop.
The whistle stop, okay. I was just asking somebody about the whistle stop, so I'm glad to see I got a good review.
It's wonderful.
Oh, good.
I'm Jeff, I like the walkability, and I also like being able to walk to the library.
Okay.
And I'm Richard, and I like the river. And I like that there's no stoplight.
I'm Dan, I like the access to the river and just the natural, the beauty of the area.
Okay.
My name's Vic, I'm a resident, been here a number of years, moved away, came back again three years ago. No parking meters, love no parking meters.
Okay, all right. Love what's not here.
My name's Eric Grab, I like no parking meters, and I love the whistle stop cafe.
Okay.
I'm Bob, a few things, I like the walkability of town as well. I'm a big fan of the history here. Sort of the general proximity to other parts of the valley, and the ease to sort of get around. The river's a huge asset, and the architecture in town is pretty unique, so.
Thank you.
I'm John, I've been a part of this meeting for quite a few months. I'm a member, well, not a member of the church yet, but I do go to this church. I live next door, so it's convenient.
All right.
I'm Alexia, I like the amount of improvement that's happened in the center of town. I bought my house five years ago, and it's totally different town.
Wow, okay.
I'm Anne, and I attend the church here, and I love the whistle stop.
Oh, good, okay. Peggy, I think we've heard from you, is that right? Okay, so how about, sir?
I'm Malcolm Burden.
Yep. And one thing you like about the Village Center?
I used to live here. I own an industrial building around the corner. And I guess I like the eclectic nature of the place.
Okay, that's the word I use when I'm here. Okay, how about?
Yes, Michael, I love the whistle stop cafe and the church.
Okay.
I'm Bob, I love the church.
All right.
Hi, I'm Carolyn. Since I don't have any transportation, well, I bet that I can walk to the library.
Okay.
I'm Dave Farman, I live in Turner's Falls, but I come to Millers for the Element Brewery and for the library.
Okay.
And my name is Jen, and this might be because I don't live here, but I really like to visit here. I like that even though the Village Center is small, I still often get lost and discover nooks and crannies and things that I didn't know here.
My name is Max, I work for the Greenfield Recorder. And I don't live here in Greenfield, but I like the river.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, did we get everybody? Yeah, okay. All right, well, thanks for doing that. It's just nice to kind of get to know a little bit about folks here. To start us off, I want to spend a few minutes.
Flat.
What's up?
I was looking at the bicycle, it's like flat.
Might, I don't know if it's in the dirt or it's flat, but I don't think it's going anywhere in any case. We spent a little time just looking at existing conditions. So we'll spend a little time just, you know, kind of reviewing our existing conditions before we get onto other things tonight. You know, I don't need to tell you about the location, you know where the location is, but it was sort of part of our process to sort of look at how far you are and how close you are to UMass Amherst. That was sort of interesting, I think that's a real asset. You know, you're close to Rattleboro, you're, you know, still close to 93, so close to Route 2. And also looked at demographics. When businesses locate in an area, they often look at the zip code demographics. So that's what we looked at, was the zip code demographics. Millers is kind of an interesting place because it spans two towns, you know, and it's defined a little differently. You know, as a census place, it's defined one way, as a zip code, it's defined the other way. So when we looked at the zip code, 1231 residents, right? So just over 12,000 residents. Compared to 8,000 in Montague and 70,000 in Franklin County. And then we just took a look at median household income is 61,000 in Millers Falls as of 2017. And that is higher than the United States average, and higher than Montague, and higher than Greenfield, and higher than Franklin County. So that, I didn't know whether, you know, I thought that was sort of an interesting statistic. That was a little different, that's something I thought about. But it's something that when businesses locate, they often look at. Because, you know, we in our communities, we might have different, we describe our neighborhoods differently. And Boston in particular, you could ask every different person, and they would talk about their neighborhoods as having little different boundaries. So when businesses look at communities, they look at zip codes because they're kind of a hard boundary.
And that includes urban, right?
Yes, it goes over into urban. You know, just obviously a quaint, historic, commercial center. The process to nominate it for listing on the National Register is underway, so that'll be on the register. It's kind of hard to count how many commercial units there are, but I counted about 16. So about 16 commercial units, you know, because there's ups and downs and more than one in each building. About five vacant units, and one more that might be coming up soon. But two of them have tenants identified. And then although there's still some vacancies, obviously, what many people pointed out, there's been a lot of new development. A lot of new development, significant investment with Bob O'Beir's company. So a lot of new things are happening. Just a little quick overview, you know, we've got mixed-use buildings on Main Street. We also have a few single-use commercial buildings that are not, don't have residential involved. And then there's at least one or two mixed-use buildings. This one was mixed-use, but it was converted entirely to residential. And my understanding is that at this point forward, buildings can't do that. You have to have commercial on the first floor, in the central business district zoning. But this one converted before that. But right now, this only will retain the mixed use, because of commercial on the first floor. These are some, this is just, this is a little shot, but this is the before picture of the corner, and really a nice after picture. You know, we could better off, even a better picture, just look out the window and see it. Another nice renovation that got done recently. I had been here quite a while ago, and then my first time back was May, and I was a really big surprise. Because it, I remembered, you know, I don't need to be at all like, I don't want to make this as insulting, but it kind of like, I somehow had this vision of like an empty, old western town kind of place. And then when I came back, it seemed like, oh, it's been occupied, or, you know, it came back to life. So it was, I was really nice to see the improvements. Here's a really nice, beautiful building that's underway, that Bob O'Beir's doing. And I think this is going to be a gorgeous building.
Oh, my gosh.
The barber shop is going to be in the lower level, and then there are going to be other tenants above. The lower level, I think they're going to enter on the side. And here's another opportunity. My understanding is that this shop is moving. So that's going to be a key retail spot that maybe someone else, you know, an opportunity to attract an active use in that location. The church, and we have Rick Widmer here. I put it in as an opportunity because my understanding is it's not currently being used. So it's an opportunity to find a use for this, or, you know, incorporating the original use, or trying to find a new use for this church, but it's a beautiful property right in the center. A little bit about the business mix. So I liked your word eclectic. That's what I kind of thought too, an eclectic mix. About a dozen establishments here, and an emerging dining and entertainment cluster. It's tiny, but it's a cluster, and it brings people in, and it offers entertainment. And that's kind of, not every restaurant offers entertainment, but three of yours do. And so that's very significant when you think about downtown. There's also artists, and the artists have kind of discovered Millers Falls, and we've got some art uses and art studios there. One thing about your district is there are some uses that don't have walk-in trade, or they're not open, or open only by appointment. That, you know, and therefore they don't attract foot traffic on a regular basis. You know, business districts really benefit when your businesses are open, regular hours, and when they look open. You know, sometimes we've worked in other commercial districts, and the businesses are in fact open for business, but because they've got lines down, or they're full of signs or whatever, they don't look open. And it adds to like a sleepy appearance of downtown. So, you know, if, not that you don't have, not that every use has to be open for business, but a volume of uses gives you sort of a, you know, eyes on the street vitality, and it brings customers in, and have the opportunity to patronize other businesses. In this tiny cluster, so we work in a lot of towns in Massachusetts that everybody wants a brew pub. Everybody wants a brewery, and you have one here. So that's pretty significant, and the fact that they already bring people in from out of town. So you've already got, starting to see a little bit of a dribble of tourists coming in, and they have live entertainment. Smokehouse seems to be very popular. How old is Smokehouse?
Six months.
So really new, okay. So it seems to be popular, has outdoor space. That's really significant. When we work in downtowns, outdoor dining is very significant. People are always attracted to it, and it brings vitality to the street. And there's like a social element to outdoor dining that people really like. They like to be seen, and they like to see. And it sort of brings an interface between the diners and people on the street. So like, you know, there's always something going on, activity. So it's nice to see that, like, even whistle stop has a little table, right, outside. And even when there's no one there, it looks lively. It looks more lively than if that table and chairs weren't there. You've got kind of narrow sidewalks, so there probably is not much room for too much else there, but just even that one table makes a difference. And then Millers Pub. So I think that the idea of, you know, that you've got this burgeoning cluster of restaurants is really significant. And that three of them offer outdoor dining, and also three of them offer live entertainment. You know, it's really significant. So the thing with commercial districts now is that everybody's talking, and not just, it's commercial districts in downtown and shopping centers, everybody's talking about experiential retailing, or experiential shopping. And the whole idea is that millennials in particular, I am not one, but millennials in particular, they will spend more money on an experience than on any retail good. And so a lot of the market research is now saying, everything we do, we have to add an experience. That's what people are looking for. Live entertainment elevates restaurants to more of an experience. It gives people a reason to go, and it gives people a reason to stay longer and come back. Because the menu might not have changed, but the music changed. So that all adds to this place having an experience. And in all of our downtown work, we're always talking to business owners like, what can we do to add an experience? How can your store do something that, there's an in-store demonstration, or there's some kind of activity, or there's something that it's not just going in and purchasing, it's not a transaction, it's an experience. Infrastructure and parking and transportation, just a quick little review here. You know, to me, this looks like a very attractive streetscaping. I love the trees too, somebody said they like the trees. And the pedestrian-scale lights, you know, really make a big difference. I didn't see public seating, I don't know, I might have missed it. But I didn't see benches, I didn't see public seating. And not much public gathering space in the Village Center. Like, if you were going to have a little outdoor event or something, I didn't see much of that. And again, I couldn't miss it, but the other thing, I don't see a sign that identified it as a Village Center. You know, that like, you know, a lot of Village Centers, you go in and, okay, there's a clock, or there's a sign, or there's a sculpture, or there's something that says, okay, here's where you are, you've arrived someplace. You've got a bus service on, or parking, first of all parking on East Main Street, diagonal parking, and then a parallel parking on Bridge. The bus service by Ferta, bus stop to over on Bridge Street. But again, I didn't see benches or bus shelter, shelter over there. And I don't know if you're familiar with this, Walk scores? There's a national company that rates places for walk scores. So right now, Millers Falls is a walk score of 41, which says car-dependent. You need an errand, you need a car for most errands. And somewhat bikeable, and I think that's because there's not a lot of bike infrastructure here. I didn't see a bike rack, is there a bike rack in place in Village Center? So I think that's, that's probably. And just quickly, a couple of other features that really are important to think about when you think about the Village Center. Is this area where Walter's team has been able to secure a grant, do some planning for a boat launch and trail near the river, so that would give you more access and open to the river. The mural, you know, which is really a nice, interesting art installation. Highland Park, nice to be that close to Highland Park, and also have a way to get up there. I understand the stairs are a little overgrown, or maybe need a little love, but, you know, it makes a quick connection to the Village Center. Again, this is just sort of what I have been able to gather. A small number of events, not a large number of events, but a small number of events in town. Art Week, and I guess right now, there's an art retreat going on, right, in downtown? So that's lovely. Few organizations, Millers Arts Collective, maybe a group of 10 artists or so. Millers Falls Art Bridge, and Millers Falls Community Improvement Association. And then, and this was just an observation, I didn't know if there was sort of a missed opportunity. Except for today, when the signs were up about art classes, when I've walked around the Village Center, it's really not been visually evident to me that there's artists here. And I wonder if that's sort of a missed opportunity, that we don't know there's artists working in the tech district, and we don't know which artists, which work in which buildings. And the studios are, you know, only open by appointment. Other towns, I just wondered if there was an opportunity for more art influence in the center's physical appearance. I did a lot of work in JP Center, they have a lot of artists there, and they really tried to translate a lot of sort of the artistic vision into the Village Center that they have there. And more engagement with the community, maybe cross-promotion with the businesses. Okay, so that's our overview. The only other thing that I wanted to mention to you before we open it up to discussion is the results of the community survey. So you have a handout. It's the one with the, looks like it has graphs on it. And Suzanne, do you have any more of those? These folks need them here. So the idea of this was, we wanted to hear from the community about what your vision was, what you think about the district, and some, you know, getting to sort of start thinking about some ideas. So we did the community survey from about mid-June, we just, I thought we closed it, but I just got two surveys in this week, so I guess we didn't close it. So we got, actually, with 69 responses, there might be another one sitting there, 70 responses. And I wanted to just show you a few of the results. So one thing we asked people is, what words would you like to use in describing Millers Falls Village Center in the future? And the thing that came up pretty consistently was bustling, vibrant, lively, and active. You know, so maybe that's a counterpoint to the way you think about the Village Center right now, or the way it's been in the past, but that's what people really are like bringing life back to the Village Center. Then fun, which isn't too far from lively, welcoming and inviting, quaint and charming, and a destination. So then I think a lot of people, those last three were tied by responses, just as many people said each one of those. But a lot of people were saying a destination. They want something that's going to draw people in, the Village Center. And there was a quote, somebody in the survey wrote a quote that I thought was kind of interesting. He said, or she, "I wanted to be a..." He said, or she, "I wanted to be," and he put this in quotes, "something to do town." Was kind of an interesting way to put it. What uses you'd like to see more of? So this is, you know, I feel like the survey says, parks and green space headed the list, then healthy food options, library services, and obviously a lot of people talked about the library tonight, more cultural and social activities and then some people had ideas for those, and more restaurants and entertainment. So those were all listed at, we asked people to rate these and you rated those as high priority. Then there's a few other ones like recreation, more shopping, community meeting space and public art. That's kind of a medium priority. And then lower priority was more art studios and more parks. Now we also asked about infrastructure and we got kind of high priorities for connecting the Village Center to the river. That was a high priority. And improving or relocating the bus stop or amenities that had to do with the bus. And then a medium priority was access between the Village Center and Highland Park. I think people were referring to the stairs. And then welcome and directional signage in the Village Center. We, also, this is what we're going to work on tonight. We asked a lot of open-ended questions and I was tearing my hair out trying to, you know, open, when you ask open-ended questions, group them and make sense of them. But this is what I could come up with, under strengths and weaknesses and opportunities that people saw for the Village Center. And what, we're going to work on these a little bit in smaller groups, but the strengths were really around the location, the new restaurant cluster, the proximity to the river and natural beauty, the historic architecture, the compactness and walkability. A lot of people refer, talked about like the people here, committed people, friendly people, a community, the small-time charm, people didn't want to lose that, and the library. That came, that came up a lot as their strength. And the weaknesses were, the big thing that a lot of responses said, this lack of critical mass of appropriate uses that, that draw people in and things to do. That was a big one. We heard parking, we heard rundown appearance, traffic, we heard that quite a bit, and speeding, concentration of housing where there may be some problem tenants, poor food shopping in particular, lack of healthy food options, lack of community space and things for kids to do, no common green, lack of public space, lack of an identity, a negative image, and then a small local population, so kind of competing with Turner's Falls and Greenfield. And then we also heard from people about opportunities like increasing recreation and opening up the river, more community and family events, promoting and building on this entertainment and eating cluster opportunities, that there's spaces available for new businesses and, you know, new renovated spaces are coming online. And then we also have the unused church, the brewery that already attracts visitors from outside, and art and public art. And this was a list of specific projects that kind of came out of the results of the survey. Sorry, I got this kind of air coming right out. It is driving me out a little bit. And so you've got this on the last page, oh no, you don't have this, you have this on another page. So you have this, but it's a list of projects and the first, I think sixteen of them or so, came from the survey results. And then we added a few that people have done in other communities. So this is not a list of what we're doing, this is not a list of, in any rank order, this is just kind of a brainstorming list. So we wanted to throw it out here to get some input from you. And what I like to do is have some discussion. So we're going to, what I think we're going to do is we're going to break up into three discussion groups. And what you need, oh, you, you delegated, okay. I'll try to delegate this.
Okay, so in no random order, no random, no, this is random order. We talked about connecting the Smokehouse better with the sidewalk on 63. We talked about the parking being an issue, particularly if we get all this development happening and we want to, but it's kind of at max already. We talked about community garden slash park space and how that would be nice, particularly if there are more people in apartments wanting garden space and as a gathering space. The, improving the stairs, Highland Park keeps coming up and is maybe something that we discussed as a privately funded, if we fundraise for something, we can do it since the town can't because it's not A D A compliant. But utilizing that park for as a strength. Anything else?
I would just add a couple of points we talked about was, lack of access to fresh healthy foods was a, was a challenge, but also an opportunity for a potential business to come. There's weaknesses and challenges. One of the items listed is lack of identity dash negative image. And our table was in unanimous agreement that they don't have a negative image or perception of Miller's Falls. However, they do agree that there is kind of a lack of coherent identity. It's almost a non-place to people that are, that don't live here. And we talked about ways to make that, how to make, how to make Miller's more of a place. And we talked about using our, our history as an asset and ways to tell that to people through visible historic exhibits was one idea that came up. And we also talked about building up partnerships with our neighbors across the river and kind of the old identity of what Miller's Falls is. Most people think of Miller's as the Monique side of the river, but not necessarily the Irving side. But some of the people that have been here longer do think of Miller's as both sides of the river. And it's kind of a identity challenge that I think the community has to figure out what, what does Miller's want to be? And I, and I know that there are some opportunities across the river that Irving is working on, particularly redevelopment of that old mill, the IP mill. And whatever happens at that particular site is going to have a profound impact on Miller's Falls and vice versa. Their ability to get that mill site redeveloped is going to depend on coherence of Miller's Falls as a village and place. So there's a lot of partnership to be rebuilt with Irving and I know that their, their select board and community should, they're very interested in what's going on here and they're open for potential partnerships in the future.
Okay, thank you. I'll go next and then go with something, or would you? So my group, I tried to delegate, but nobody was taking. Couple of things that we came up, people talked about under strengths, that Highland Park was a real strength, but not fully utilized. I felt that really could be used at more. And also under strengths that it was really important to protect, one of the strengths, protect the library, so that people talked about that.
The river, we really emphasized the river too.
Protect the river, yeah.
Not just protect it, but just that that's a real strength of our.
Absolutely. We, we had that same discussion about the role of, you know, what's going on in Irving to really be more collaborative with what's going on across the river. And people had some specific projects, well, you know, and the other thing that people talked about, the, the planned river development. People talked about the fact that there's a waterfront park in Irving and an apple and an orange and there should be some effort to sort of coordinate with them and, you know, get a blue trails kind of thing going. And people also talked about how it's actually very difficult to canoe and kayak at that spot. And that maybe should be thinking more about like things like boardwalks and interpretive signs and other ways to lose the river, not just canoeing and kayaking. The other things we came up with, get some grants for the library, fully utilize Highland Park, like movie night. Somebody was really talking about how they missed the bus to UMass, there's no, there used to be a bus to UMass and now there isn't. Pedestrian crossing or some kind of a lighter pedestrian control at Bridge and Main. Using the area near the old hotel as a town green, developing it as a green space. We were talking about that, I don't even, people didn't even know who owns that land that's near the railroad. Miller's Falls is using it as a site for a large outdoor sculpture exhibit that maybe would be biennial, you know, and could be seasonal. Historic walking tour brochure, there was interest in that. Restoring Halloween and all their holidays, that there doesn't seem to be enough holiday celebrations here. And then they talked about an opportunity, oh, the church, using St. John's Church or developing it as a community center or some kind of collaborative space. And then as far as parking goes, people talked about opportunities, parking maybe behind the church is a possibility. And then also talked about, a little bit about the opportunities at the bridal shop and, and behind it. And that was kind of the summary when I turned over.
Okay, I didn't even think about delegating. So many of the things that have already been mentioned, we came up with as well. So I'm just going to go through my notes and let you know what our group said that's, that hasn't been said yet. So it'll just take a second for me to kind of look at this. One of the strengths, we thought the Miller's Falls Community Improvement Association is a strength, just full stop, to have a group that meets on a monthly basis, that has at least a small but really dedicated core group, that's interested in taking the work that we're talking about now and kind of continuing it and making it come to fruition and advocating for Miller's Falls. We see that as a real strength. Let's see. Eric came up with something, I'm not surprised it came from him, but one of the strengths is the feeling of possibility. I think our group was kind of either very, was very cerebral. We talked about concepts a lot, but the feeling of possibility is something that not every community has. It means that people could come here and if they want to do something, they could actually, they could do it. So I thought that that was a really good strength and, and I thought that was, hasn't really come up yet. Weaknesses and challenges, we could use more members in the Miller's Falls Community Improvement Association because in order to get these.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt. Could we send around a signup sheet for the community association?
Oh yeah, we'll do that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, if we can start it now, then it'll go around.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So there's a sheet right there and there's a sharpie right there. As far as weaknesses, we thought that it was a little bit difficult for neighbors to communicate, that this is something that's kind of fallen, you know, it's something that's not really happening. And we thought of, you know, ways of doing that. People, of course, the default now is social media, but that's not exactly what I think we were talking about. Our group was talking about, yes, Mike?
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but if there's a signup sheet going around.
Yes.
The Miller's Falls Community Improvement Association don't really have to become amended, just show up at meetings. There is a mailing list, there is a Facebook page, if you, there's an email list.
Low commitment.
So on the signup sheet, you basically put down your email address, you can be added to that list and you will get notifications about stuff that's going on. And the group is the people who show up at the meetings.
Right.
So it's not like, I mean, I've been there, several other people in this room have been there, but it's not like we're special except that we show up. Third Thursday of the month.
Third Thursday. And you might learn origami from Mike.
So we have a sheet coming around and both types of email addresses.
We would love that more people show up.
So it's a strength that it exists, but it's not, again, being as active as it could be, only because it needs more people. It seems to have a lot of great ideas, but all these ideas take a little bit of investment of people's time. One of the weaknesses was that there doesn't seem to be a central way of communicating. And we kind of figured out kind of an interesting way, this kind of goes to our projects, but we came up with this idea of a column maybe in our Monique newspaper, in the Monique Reporter called Miller's on the Move. Like take what it is that we're doing today and make it like a monthly page. We would have to, of course, talk to the Monique Reporter. Content would probably be generated in the community largely by the Miller's Falls Community Improvement Association, but it could be like one page, maybe once a month, completely dedicated to Miller's Falls, all the things that are going on here and, you know, this is something we can approach the newspaper and see if this is something we can do. So once a month, everybody gets to kind of talk to their neighbors about things that are kind of happening in, happening in the upcoming weeks. And it would be an input of time, but it would be great because that's our newspaper. So we did weaknesses and challenges, opportunities. So apparently the little cafe, the Red Lantern is up for sale. Be fun to have another place to eat in town. Kind of, is that like right around the bridge there? I've never been in there, but more food, the better. There's, also there's some open lots, again, that could be parks and whatnot. We're not really sure who they belong to, but that came up, like who owns this and who owns that and why isn't that being utilized? We see a community garden as a way of addressing kind of the food shortage in town for healthy foods. We also see it as, you know, the, an opportunity, having a garden, it's come up many times, but a way of hitting a lot of different points, bringing up the communication between neighbors, obviously healthy food, obviously a hobby that people would have together and friendship building and kind of bringing people that don't really know each other, that live next to each other back together. So increasing communication between neighbors was something that we saw as an opportunity. And we also saw an opportunity of, this is kind of falls under the heading of a feeling of possibility, but entrepreneurship here. That if somebody wants to do something, let's say kind of partner with selling something at the food store, if they were a vegetable vendor or something like that, maybe the people who own the food store would be willing to give over some space. You know, if they have room for potato chips, do they have room for organic produce? So maybe this isn't, maybe this is an entrepreneur thing where someone takes some responsibility as opposed to something that they need to do. And we were given several examples of how that particular business is open to ideas and suggestions, suggestions. And one of the projects would be a suggestion box there. You know, what is it that you want to eat? I gave the example of Food City, who not that long ago was being slaved to close, that was really on hard times. And then people started making suggestions and people got behind the food store and now it's, you know, obviously doing much better. So maybe it's as simple as a, a suggestion box, so people can just write what it is that they would like to have in that store and then maybe it'll appear. A kiosk, some kind of place where people can post up information would be a good thing. And that could be maybe something that's maintained by the Miller's Falls Community Improvement Association. And, yeah, just greater advocacy as, it's, it's not really a program, but kind of a goal, which is greater advocacy for Miller's Falls, that these people come together through this improvement association and then that they feel like they have more of a voice in town hall. And that they can go in front of the select board and say, this is how we see things going and this is what we'd like to have changed. So those are our, that's our summary. Please eat cookies.
Okay, great, thank you. You know what we want to do next is just take a couple of minutes and have you look at, at least look at the, the list of projects. So now this list of projects got a whole lot longer, but that's, that was really what we were hoping for tonight. And we're going to do two things with this list. First of all, if anybody has any additional information that they want to provide about any of these items or if there's any questions on any of these items, we're really not going to discuss all these projects right now because we're going to do more of that between now and at our next meeting. But we wanted to just get some information out. So does anybody have any particular questions or any information they want to add about any of these? I know one thing that came up was the stairway. Do you want to address that, Walter, the stairway to Highland Park? The constraints on that?
Sure. I think he, he touched upon that. Definitely there's a clear priority from the community to improve the stairway that goes to Highland Park. It's, I think it's municipally owned, but it's on a easement, it's owned by the, the property itself is owned by the power company. The challenge with fixing up stairways is that the town, can I use public funds to fix up a stairway without providing handicap accessible pathway? And it's, there's no feasible way to make that particular stairwell handicap accessible. And so that's kind of a conundrum. And we have the same challenge with Hills, Intern's Falls, similarly, well, please. However, there are, the town can do other things like fix up sidewalks, but the stairs really can't, can't be repaired without a handicap accessible solution. It's a priority, there's things we can do to, to hire engineers to help come up with a solution. There really is no easy solution. There really is no easy solution.
But couldn't that be done by any kind of a community group or anything like that that they can fix it up or?
Yeah, theory the stairs could be taken over by a community group and they could take responsibility for the pathways cleared.
What liability issues come up with that?
It's something we can, we can talk about, but there are ways to address liability concerns.
Was there any other things that, a couple of things that came to mind. Do you want to address a little bit about what is being planned for the river and the kayak launch? Or, you know, what's going to be there? Are you in the planning stage or?
Yeah, so the improved river access is the small strip of land right before you take the bridge over to the IP mill on Newton Street. You take a left and there's a strip of land between you and the river. Goes from the, the bridge to the IP, to the railroad bridge. That is a parcel of land that the town of Montague now owns. They took ownership of it, paying the taxes last year. It was previously owned by the paint and metal company that's across the river. And the town has secured a grant from Department of Conservation and Recreation to improve that area, make it a formal public river access point. There currently is a little access trail that goes from the road down to the river. And that's gonna get cleaned up so that somebody in theory could back down and drop off a canoe or kayak if the water's high enough. But it'll also have a bench and a picnic table and a small handicap accessible walkway in the woods. And it'll link up. It can be part of kind of a loop walk, but people are walking around Miller's. They can now take a small stretch, you know, it's a few hundred feet. But it would go along the river, you know, the woods. It should be a nice little area where people can go and formally access the river.
Can I ask a question, Walter? On the other side of the road where the, from the river, so there's this stretch along the river, but then there's another fairly flat space below the railroad tracks? Is that private property or?
That land is owned by the town as well, that came with the taking. No improvements are proposed there right now. It actually is, there's a lot of wetlands, obviously, you can't, you can't do much with that.
The other one that came to my mind was, is there somebody here from the bus, the FRTA? Berta, the bus company?
No, they didn't like it.
So I think that the thing with that is people were looking at relocating the bus stop or making some improvements to the bus stop. I think that what we found out is that there's no other place to put the bus stop. That they've looked into it and they haven't been able to find any other places. But they are open to the idea of putting in some amenities. A bus shelter or a bus or bench or some amenities. Yes, did you?
I invited Mike from, they're usually, Tammy, they're both directors of the FRTA, Franklin County Transit Authority. And they declined to come. I know the bus stop used to be behind Carols. There's no reason why they can't put it behind Carols. But it just holds up traffic, especially when they're putting me out because of the wheelchair. Sometimes wheelchair thing breaks. They seen it, there's traffic down to the, to the end. It's just crazy.
I have photos of that. I felt that.
Can you talk a little louder?
I'm sorry, I have photos, that, that's our house. That's the bus stop, that's our house right there. I feel like in terms of the discussion, the last thing I want to discuss is the personal impact. Because I mean, it went all the same, done in the big picture, that's the least important to have two people saying, it's a drag for me to have to clean up behind people. But I thought that the overwhelming thing about this was simply, this is Route 63. We have tractor trailer trucks that come up and down. We don't have four lanes, we have two lanes. And when the bus comes up and stops, that's one lane less than two. And as has been mentioned, when there's a wheelchair passenger. One time there was a situation, and this is familiar to Tammy and I from being from Amherst and using their system, the wheelchair system froze. Sometimes the buses gather slush underneath and when the thing goes out, it won't go back because it's jammed up. And that happened one day where they literally had to leave the doors open and the thing halfway out till another bus pulled up, up the block. And in regards to the, you know, the conclusion they came to, there's not a better place. There was the previous place. You know, were there complaints, were there problems with the previous place? And we were wondering why it can't just go back to the way it was. So when he came up with a new idea of putting it out on the main track. I mean, I understand technically that's Main Street, but this is the main drag of this town and this is where all these trucks go through. And just in terms of common sense safety, that it was simply a better portion to go back to where it had previously been, which is simply off the main route where all of this traffic goes.
When there's not a bump out, but there's a bump in.
Right, and that's the other thing. They took the one spot where there's a bump out to stop the bus on the main street path.
So I don't know if we, what we should try to get somebody from FRTA at our next meeting maybe or?
Yeah, I know they're aware of the issue. Yeah, we can try and, you know, come to the next meeting.
We thought we'd have somebody here tonight to address that.
And we know that it should have, a bus pullout is the proper thing to have particularly in an urban area like this. And they're aware of that as well.
And just for the record, the final detail, as the people that live there, I spent a lot of time cleaning up behind people. Spent a lot of time opening up my front door, letting people know that that's the bus stop, not my front porch.
They did volunteer to buy trash cans, but the challenge is just maintaining that.
And the thing is, is that, you know, who's going to maintain the trash can, you know?
The other, um...
I have to just, where, where was the other bus stop that you said the previous? Or was that located?
It was right behind Carols. It was both by Carols.
The next right here, the street from here?
Yeah, Franklin.
Was that convenient to you?
I don't know, I didn't take, I was living at that in Amherst.
It was a good place. I used to take the bus. I lived in Amherst, I lived in Amherst and I took that 63 bus that came from UMass, left at 4:15 from Pegas Mall, came right up 63 and through here. They completely annihilated that route. Now if you want to go, you literally get on a bus in Amherst going to North Hampton. And there's a North Hampton bus that takes you out to Greenfield and then you get on a Greenfield bus that takes you to...
Wow, okay.
I, I actually was one of the other parts of the...
Can you just talk a little louder?
Yes, I was one of those people that was talking about the bus. You know, just because like I try to be more eco-friendly, you know, I have an eco-friendly car, but I would also like to be able, like if I, for whatever reason, my car breaks down, I would like to be able to get to work and get my son to school because my son doesn't go to school in this school district. He goes to Amherst. So, you know, I would like to have that route back and with more frequent times so that like if I get out of work at five, I can get home, you know, still. Because that was one of the reasons why I couldn't take the bus is because, not that it was too early, the early times are fine, but it stopped at four.
And that was the thing, that, just because we're here, that run was just a few more yards before they let us go. I lived in Amherst. I traveled back and forth. I became a student at GCC just a few years, around 95, I became a student at GCC. Traveled back and forth. I became a student senator at Greenfield Community College. And my main focus then was trying to enhance the bus system and trying all different ways to communicate with FRTA. I mentioned it then, you have three buses from Amherst that cross the river and go to Deerfield, the center of Deerfield. You already had two buses that go from Greenfield to Deerfield. Is there any way you guys could at least link together? And for them, it was just, I mean, I think the overall thing was, we don't really take suggestions from people. We're a bus company, we know our business. This is what works for us.
And even Miller's could benefit so much from the traffic from UMass if there was a bus that came through.
Yeah.
Also, for the amount of money that people pay to live in Amherst, to go to UMass, the travel expense coming in, the difference rent-wise is so radically different from what's being charged. And there's no way in the world that travel expenses are a significant detail. You know what I mean? It's like we, it's much, much more affordable to be out here than it is to be in Amherst on any level. And I thought that the connection would be really vital and really useful, but it just...
Or to get to GCC from Montague.
Yeah.
It takes an hour and a half if you're lucky and you can't get to your class.
My son, my son came home the other day, he just started at GCC and he got on the wrong bus and he said, I took a really scenic ride through Solomon for five hours.
Charlotte and your van.
So I think what we want to, I want to end on time because you were so nice to come. And we were so, this is a wonderful turnout, so this is fantastic. But we want to wrap up on time because you have given us a lot of your time. The next thing I want to just talk about is, we need to take all the good stuff that came out of this meeting and then carry it forward. We do want to do a little bit of work in August and then we want to get back together in September. And I'm wondering if anybody in this room has found any idea that's come up so far that they would like to maybe do a little bit more research on, look into, grab a couple of people and have a little subgroup around? Are there any ideas that anybody here is willing to create a little subgroup around? I mean, I've heard some interest in the community garden.
I will take care of that.
Community garden?
Yes.
Okay, can, can we get the name? I don't know all these folks, can we break down the names?
Sure, I'll remember.
You'll remember?
Would anybody like to go over to the Montague Reporter and talk with, you would? And talk with them about kind of at least starting some kind of monthly column? Date just...
I, I could only look into the historical walking tour booklet. I'll, I'll talk with Ed Gregory and I'll also see about getting some more historical walking tours from the library, going.
Did you get somebody from the library? I mean, I'm just thinking, did you get somebody from the reporter?
Yeah, David Rice from the library. He's gonna bring that up.
Anybody else, any other things that kind of catch your eye that you'd be willing to do a little bit of research on between now and next time?
Actually, I don't want to take control, but what I want to throw out is maybe adding a fourth stop sign at the main street and bridge street intersection, just to even things out. Because it's definitely, when the traffic is heavy, it's definitely one sided, but people start going at those stops.
Is that Bridge and Main, did you say?
Yeah, Bridge and Main.
Same, we're talking about the lights.
So we were talking about lights. Does anybody want to look into that a little bit further? Yeah?
I already have. They can't do anything because it's a state road. So they can't put a stop sign coming down hill on 63. They could, they could do traffic enforcement or form those light up signs that show the speed limit. Because I personally have almost been hit a couple of times crossing the street by people just whipping down the hill and I always wish that had rocked my hands.
But it used to be a sign that the state route ended before there. I don't know if...
I don't think it does.
Well, I remember there was a sign that the state route ends, you know, here.
A question for you, Bob. What, we have a stop sign right in front of Ward Store. Or the Tattoo Parlor, whatever you want to call it. That's the same road as coming down the other side, isn't it?
I guess so. I mean, this is, I called and talked to the chief of these last year or a year and a half ago. And that's what they told me, so that, that's all.
Okay.
Well, now we have new trees.
That's true, that's true.
So I don't know, does anybody want to take that a little bit farther? Do a little bit more research on what kind of traffic control could be on that intersection?
Walter, is it already been done?
Walter's gonna take that one?
Good.
Okay. Do you have any other takers for anything? What's that?
I was thinking that somebody, about the appearance of the town. I think somebody needs to also think about what we could, we add for the appearance of the town and somebody could take charge of that too.
Okay. Any other, anything else that anybody, you know, wants to kind of like do a little bit more to kind of pull it, put it, move it forward between now and next time? Yes?
I'd like to do a little work on the public art idea.
Okay, wonderful. So we'll probably have Suzanne get back to you guys that volunteered. We'll do a little bit more work between now and next meeting. And the other thing is that we want, we, we really don't want to lose this momentum. I think this was a really good meeting. So we want to do a little follow-up on a lot of these ideas that you're gonna see back again in September. So our idea, our idea is doing a little bit more research, coming back together and finding a way to get some priorities, some short-term and medium priorities off of this list.
Okay, I'm curious about something, Kate?
Yes.
I found about the meeting through the recorder. How did everybody else find out about this meeting?
Oh, I called it buckshot. I put it everywhere that I could. So there were posters, media, reporter. And then also the survey had an email. So it was like personal email device.
I just want to let you know, the article that ran in the recorder was my cue to get down here.
Go ahead.
Just that you know whether you really saw that.
These, the question is, how did the student who came here find out?
Right.
From Melinda in the library. She was very active in spreading that word about the survey and about this meeting.
Did we have everybody's email address now so that we can get back to you about the next one? Because we also might want to communicate with you between these two meetings. You might want to get some more feedback. So if we have your email address, then that's a good way to get ahold with you.
If you, if you got an email, a reminder email from me this afternoon, that means we already have it. But if you did not get a reminder email from me this afternoon, that means that right now we currently don't have it. So maybe sign the list and, and we'll, you know, we'll grow that list out.
Are we gonna meet at the library or where's our next meeting?
Hopefully here. I gotta talk with, I gotta talk with the, because this is really, again, this is, we don't have a large community room, this is...
It would be a tiny, size group from the library.
No, I'd like to comment about 25 comfortably, yeah.
And before we leave, I want to announce we are having Ice Cream Social Saturday from?
Ten.
Ten to two.
Ten to two.
Ten to two.
At the library.
Outside the library.
Next to the library, yes.
Thanks for all the X's.
And we're gonna just have a couple of words to wrap up.
Yep, just to wrap up. Again, sign the email list because we really want to inform you guys of everything that's going on. Thank you for coming. I counted 36 people, which I think is really great. Thank you very much to Covenant Church for hosting us. It really makes a big difference and the church was really good. They said yes right away and I really appreciate it. Thank you for coming and thank you for the whole, the church. If after this meeting, you say to yourself, oh, I really wish I had brought that up. I'm always available, I'm in Town Hall roughly Monday to Fri, Monday to Thursday, kind of nine in the morning till three in the afternoon. You can call me at Town Hall. I'm happy to take your phone call. You all have my email address. It should be on one of those sheets.
Right, agenda for a screening.
So, so you don't have to wait till the third Thursday in September in order to bring your idea up. Please feel free to email me or give me a call and put a podcast on your mind. Happy to speak with you.
And we'll get back to anybody that volunteered. We will probably get, want to get some information from you and have you be part of the next meeting to kind of give, you know, give a lot.
Are you guys collecting the sheets?
Yes, we'll collect those.
I can't sign up for Miller's Falls Community Improvement Association. Does anybody else want to sign?